Pledge allegiance.
Apologize for the delay. It's currently seven twenty-six. We did have a town hall meeting that ran, ran over, so I appreciate everybody's patience. So we'll get on with the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda and approval of the minutes and the consent agenda? Anybody have any changes they wanted to add or delete?
Yeah, I'd like to pull out. We talked about this. Two of the invoices or bills, checks make I, the sodium chloride bill. We just have to figure out where to pay that from.
So I spoke with Rhonda today about that. She said that would come out of the general fund and she didn't feel that there's going to be any kind of an issue with that.
No, no, she's, she wants it to come out of media.
Oh.
And also the donation if we decide to do it. So there's no, but we, let's, we need to make it a, a, a agenda item anyway to address it. So we'll make that I. And J, that donation to the memorial fund.
I is what, the sodium chloride?
Yeah.
I'm gonna grab a packet on that. I got it on my desk then for the.
And J is the hero, McCombero?
Yeah.
It's actually, the proper terminology is brine treatment. They don't use sodium chloride anymore.
Okay.
I'd like to add closed-door session if we can.
That's after seven then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a topic or?
After eight. Can make it after eight.
After eight?
Personnel. Issues.
So that would be like eight B or eight B?
We got item seven, seven B. We kind of discussed a lot of that already. Is that something we want to keep on? Obviously, we got a committee here, so we can still keep it on there. The sewer and water.
Talk about staffing for that one.
Okay.
It won't take long.
Anybody else have anything?
I just want to verify a couple of things. Prior to this meeting, there's some questions I had asked that were addressed. One and two had to do with, with the minutes, one with spelling and one with putting names. I just want to make sure those, those are going to be taken care of. So we'll approve the minutes as modified?
Those corrections were made, I think, weren't they?
Yeah, I don't have a new minute, so I just want to make sure that the minutes, when they get recorded, are recorded as updated.
I, I made note of it, but I, in case there were other additions, I didn't correct it yet.
So the board has seen those questions, right? And then, then we all agree that those modifications we made? Okay. And then you addressed the heroes. So the minutes are going to be modified, the agenda's going to be modified. I'm good with that.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Not, does anybody want to make a motion, go and approve?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes, the agenda for tonight?
As, as, as modified?
As modified.
Second?
Second by Tremblay. Any other discussion? Not, may we get a roll call, please?
Giorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. This is the section where we come with comments from the floor. We just wish that you would, we would prefer that you would go to the podium speaker, name and your address, and we would like for your comments to be kept for no longer than three minutes. You know, we've had plenty of comments already this evening. Is there anybody else who would like to comment at this time from the audience?
Two things.
Sure. State.
I'm part of Cloverfield.
You gotta state.
Oh, Janet Batani, Cloverfield resident. Two things. I am a, on a fixed income and I know you can't do anything about the water bill, but it's now, my water bill's $200 a month on a fixed income, so it's going to be a little rough for me. Okay, so I'm willing to work with whatever we need to do to figure out what the problem is so that everybody's happy and, and that kind of thing with the water. The second thing is, I want to thank Lisa and Mike and Frank for coming and helping Parks and Rec on Saturday. We knocked out 12 tables and 14 benches in less than three hours, and thank you for coming to help.
It was a nice turnout. It was very good.
Thank you as well, too.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't aware of it until afterwards, but nice job, guys.
Um, anybody else at all? Now we're gonna move on. Okay. Um, we'll move on to hearings and reviews, which we have none, which is item five. Item six is unfinished business. Item six A would be the auditor's contract. Susan, you want to take that?
Well, this is a contract that we talked, uh, tabled last month. Some of the concerns, well, one of the concerns was that, uh,
Give me the mic.
Oh, sorry. Uh, we talked about how long they had been. We employed them. Their contract started in, um, three, March nine, uh, 2019. Um, if, I don't know if anybody had any other questions or concerns. Uh, they are a part of Mitten, so they are, um, a competitive contractor.
We're not required to go out to bid because they are part of the Mitten agreement.
And, and I'm a little concerned because Dana is leaving and we're having some shifts in our accounting department. To change them at the same time, it's a little unsettling to me, so.
And I, to be honest with you, from the treasurer's office, we're very happy with them. Uh, they come in, they come in as a group and they sit there and they do their work. They come in and ask for documents, walk us through what they need, both with the treasurer's office and the accounting department. So they're very good people to work with and, um, I don't know, I just.
And if, we could change the team, too, if, if that would make people feel more comfortable, uh, if we wanted something different. Uh, they have different audit teams, so.
I think there was a question at the last meeting, is how long have they been? Um, have we, have they been, we've been using the same company or how long's it been since it went out for bid? I might have missed it when I went and got the dust control.
March of 2019.
Twenty nineteen.
There was a competitive bid in March of nineteen?
Yeah.
Do we know who the other competitive bidders were?
I don't know.
So, the, the question I have, Lisa, you said something about being part of Mitten?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Um, it is a, uh,
Approved vendor with the state of Michigan.
With the state of Michigan, which in most cases takes away the need to go out to bid because they've already been approved through the state of Michigan. So it's not a requirement for most municipalities to have to go out for bid again if they, if the provide, service provider is included and has been authorized under that agreement.
So my question is, are there other auditors that are certified under Mitten that could provide competitive services? Are there rates approved by Mitten that?
I believe.
Everybody pays the same rate?
I believe so. For municipal, there are like set rates, I believe. It's been a while since I've used.
So I think the justification should be if, if we make a motion to approve that, uh, that be part of whatever motion is made to approve them, that, so that we're not in violation of our competitive bid policy?
Correct. So are you going to, were, um, were you going to state, were you gonna make a motion?
Hey, I'm, how'd you want that to read? I, I make a motion that we accept the contract with Manor and Custerison as presented.
Second.
Second by Giorgio. Is there any other?
Yeah, I would suggest that as part of the motion that we also state the reasons why we're not putting it out for competitive bid.
Which would be, it's part of the Mitten contract.
And Custerian, who are part of the Mitten program.
State of Michigan, Mitten program.
And the rates are approved by the state of Michigan, right? That way there, the minutes reflect why we did it.
Why we did it.
Because the minutes become the official record of the township.
Did you get that?
I think I did. We're being recorded, so. Craft?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Mr. Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, uh, item six B, phones for board members. Susan?
Yes, we talked about this last month and I went back and had them reduce it to only four phones because the two of you weren't interested in having one. And the price he gave me, and this is not a very, um, well-written, the other one was handwritten, so I guess in that respect it's better. But his, the price he gave me was $189.90 a month for those phones. There are also tablets listed here. However, he came back to me and said that he talked to someone else. Because we're a government agency, he might be able to get it lowered. I never got additional information from him, so you may want to table this for next month. So that I have a very firm number. Or you, we might want to just say.
Prove it at this. If it's less, it's less, I guess. I mean, it'd be.
I guess you could say up to a hundred.
You can do it not to exceed motion?
Yeah.
Is that 190 for all three per month?
And that includes phone and service?
So, yes, and that, so the phones, the phones are free, but it's for the three of us and then for chief.
The four full-timers?
Yeah.
We did have an incident where the fire chief's phone, his personal phone was FOIA'd, and he did have to turn over his personal phone for, um, information. So anything we use our personal phones for in regards to anything with public, um, which I am guilty of doing, and I, I, I need to make phone calls when I'm not at work to, for emergency basis, or even just to return calls to residents have reached out to me. I get their voicemail home sometimes.
Well, even when we do our fan out for, you know, if our offices closed, the only way I have to do it is on my phone, so.
I, I would like my phone number to be made public for the community. They, they can have it. It would become something they can call me 24/7, you know, if they need it to, I guess, if they felt the need to. I think it's a great way to, to, um, have your community be able to get ahold of you. I'm not real fond of the phone systems that we have where you got to go through all the prompts in order even to get you to office. So I'm, I'm fine. I, I love the idea.
Yeah, me too.
Accessibility to the, to the board.
You guys are okay with not having one?
Absolutely. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Um, did you say that this does not include the tablets or it does?
Does not.
Does not.
There's an additional amount of, the tablets is the top part.
Okay.
And it was like 340, but, um, and that included the tablets and, you know, as I said, this didn't come across. He, he and I were reading two different things when we looked at it and we're talking on the phone, so I was supposed to get a better, uh, accounting, but I could come back with that if you want to.
I got a four.
You know, like Mike said, not to exceed.
Well, I have a total with that, with what you have here at four forty-five, forty-two for the tablets and the phones.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I'd like to see because it, here they're telling you there is a charge per month for the devices, for the Apple iPhones.
For, not for the phones, but for the tablets. Phones are free. Um, see.
See, down at the bottom, it says devices. There's, uh, Apple iPhone 12, 64 gigabyte, 36-month device payment on the price of $600. Economic adjustment charge, so due monthly, four times $23.03. So the ni, a $92.12 for the phones, and then they're charging, well, if we're not considering the, the iPads, then that's a separate. So I just, I'd just like to see clarification.
If you guys want to do iPads, I don't, I didn't even know if that was a consideration. If you wanted to go paperless and sit here with an iPad, I don't know.
And that's something we should probably consider because the cost of paper has doubled because of shortages. I've heard that from a printer, uh, just recently. I had to deal with a printer over Shamrock Printing. They're complaining about, um, not being able to get the supplies needed and the cost of paper is doubling. So that's something we should seriously consider because, you know, some, I mean, we have a light pack this time, but a lot of times our decks are twice as big or not, not three times as big. And I know Amy does a good job as far as taking our, our, our packet and printing on both sides. So we do try to conserve, but still, we use a lot of paper. You know, not only for our board meetings, but.
Oh, yeah. And with getting the, the big screen put up with the new technology that we're going to have available.
True, yeah.
We won't have to print copies for, um, the public, like, we, you know, we could make it available on our website and then also show it during board meetings as well. That is something to consider.
Is that, is that?
Kind of didn't pursue that part because I thought we were just talking about phones, so, I mean, I know he said to me three forty-five for the tablets. If you wanted to put it, I could bring it all back next month if you want me to.
Yeah. I mean, I, I see it pretty clearly.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then do you want to just, uh, cap it?
Well, I, I'm trying to understand this. I mean, Lisa, you brought up there's a price for the iPhone.
Mm-hmm.
But I heard it was free. So there's a conflict between the two.
That's what I would like.
So maybe you should come back with.
They say free and then, you know, it also has to, it has to be a, um, online payment, so do you call it?
Yeah.
Paperless.
Paperless.
Yeah.
We, we need one tablet for the chief, I think. I mean, he's not here this evening, but I think that it would be important that he's still got part of the board package. So we need to add one more tablet if we're going to do it right. At, right?
Yeah.
Should we hold off on the tablets until, um, maybe next year, next fiscal year? See how we're doing things? Try to, um?
We do still have some money in our media budget.
Yeah, we still got 47,000, just under 47,000 in that.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, go ahead and approve it, not succeed. Um, I think it's $500 with the chief getting a tablet also, along with the rest of the board members. That looks like to me, $500 a month, it would be maximum if he can, because I think that these are based on, on the whole package, right?
Yeah. A second.
Can, can you explain to me how you get the $500? Because I don't see it.
Um.
I get $190 a month for four phones. So is it?
Well, that, yeah, so I'm, yeah, maybe.
Is it three ten for tablets?
The three oh four to ninety-two twelve and the forty-nine thirty is what I kind of use to calculate it, but maybe one of those figures comes off. That's the part that I wasn't quite 100% sure of, but that brought me to the four forty-five, forty-two.
There was some adjustment, too, because we're a government agency. They were gonna, it was going to go down a little bit more. There weren't going to be taxes, for example. So maybe you want to say $600 just to, and, and clarify where it's coming from.
So I'll make a motion, go ahead and approve si, not exceed $600, um, for cellular phones for the board members and tablets, um, with money coming from the media fund, with the funding coming from the media fund. $600 monthly, right?
Second.
Second by Frank. Mike, did you have any more discuss, more discussion?
I don't understand where the $600 is coming from. Because I was told the phones were free, if there's a charge on the sheet, that's a.
The toll for the phones is $189.90.
And that's usage only?
That's everything. That, yeah, right. But that, but then that scenario, phones are free. As long as we pay online.
That seems high to me.
It's what?
That seems high to me. Yeah. I pay $35 a month for one line.
What service you have?
Verizon. I pay less than $35 a month.
To be, to talk to the phones, the actual.
But I thought the phones were free, that's why, because I, I look at my usage. I pay $35, that's, that's all in, taxes and everything.
So if anybody else wants to, you know.
I, I just have too many questions. I would vote no because I have too many questions, but.
I, you know, I can bring it back. You can just table it if you want.
We got unanswered questions. I think that would probably be good. I'd like to see unanimous vote come on this, so maybe it would be better. We just scratch that last, um, uh, motion. Um, but we did table this last month also, and we, so what, let's make sure that Susan goes back and gets the correct information, so maybe we need to.
I've got four phones and a tablet on Verizon account, on a business account, my LLC, and it costs me $295 a month.
Maybe you should shop around.
Four phones.
I don't think so. I think you need to get a new phone.
Why would I get a new phone? I got a 12.
I got a.
I got an iPhone 12.
I have a 13 and I'm only paying 35 a month for service, unlimited text.
I've got unlimited everything.
Hotspot, everything, and my phone is, um, I think, $17 a month. So I'm paying less than, I got a family plan that I have every.
The reason I have questions is because the numbers aren't adding up for me.
Yeah, I ju, I just want to confirm that we're not paying an extra charge for the phones. I have no problem. I think it's absolutely a necessity for you, the three of you, to have it. I, I'm not questioning that.
What about the, the five tablets, though?
And the five tablets, too?
So let's, yeah, we don't want to spend any more time on this right now. We can go ahead and, Susan, would you mind looking at this one more time?
No, I, I don't. It's gonna be a busy month, though, so I hope, I'll try to get to it before.
Okay. I mean, if one of you.
You have a contact, I'm happy to follow up, Susan.
Yeah, I mean, you were.
Okay.
Just let me know. I can help you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so we're tableing it. Sorry about that. Scratch it. Yeah, I'll resend that motion. Okay. Moving on to item, what was that?
Are you gonna make a motion to table, bring it back, or?
Uh, yeah, we, I guess we can vote on the motion, uh, table. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna, um, take item seven, um, seven A. No, where do we, oh, item six B, which is table till next month. Can we get a roll call, please?
Second.
Okay. Details. Philbrook?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Motion pass. Okay, moving on to item seven C on unfinished business, ARPA update.
So, um, if you look, uh, the front page is pretty explanatory. Um, with the ARPA funds, we received $794,996.17. Under expenses, you'll see all the things that we spent money on, which came to $500,934.15. We have a balance of $294,294.062. And the cable funds, you'll see, $110,000 was deposited in those expenses with the spongy moth and, uh, the interrogation for the Tricasters, upgraded the equipment and the balance due of the, that's right, Susan, the balance due on the, uh, upgrade of the equipment is $16,893. We gave them 50%?
Yeah, I'd have to look to make sure that's the exact amount, but.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. This came from Dana. So, so, uh, $63,032.29 was, uh, in expenses, which leaves us a balance of $46,967.71. And then in the next, uh, two pages, you'll see, our list that we put together as far as, uh, needs, our priorities, we prioritize them. Wherever you see a asterisk, um, that's kind of like a priority. Um, the security systems being completed, the Powell Road project, that's, I don't know if we paid that yet, but that's currently being, uh, done. The doors and locks, um, that's also, we're waiting for the doors to come in. They should be in, uh, within the next week or two. Uh, the parking lot is a desperate need because we got some big potholes in there.
Found one tonight.
Huh?
I found one tonight.
Yeah, craters, they're not potholes.
I almost lost my car in it.
Um, then we have that water study that was done, but that was, that was free, the scanner. We completed that, right? We don't owe him any more money, right? That's completed. So everything that you see shaded is stuff that's either been completed or, uh, is being done right now. Uh, wherever it's not shaded, you'll see that, you know, if it don't have an asterisk next to it, it's not that important, but where there is an asterisk, um, it is still on the list to be done. So I guess we need to go through that and prioritize all those things. I don't know if we want to do that in a separate meeting or.
Frank, the asterisks are ones that we determined as a board to be high priority, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. One is the cemetery BSA software and maintenance. I think we voted on that last month. I think we said it was to come out of ARPA funds, and I didn't see that on here. I just wondered if.
That came out of the cemetery funds. We had funds in the cemetery to pay for that.
Okay, so that didn't come out of, okay.
Well, no, because I just got word today that the cemetery software was going to come out of our funds today, fifty-six hundred dollars.
That's what we voted on.
I thought we did, too.
Did we?
Yeah.
It was probably in our minutes.
It might be in our minutes, yeah.
Five thousand, $600 for the BSA software that's going to come out of ARPA.
Okay. And then, uh, you're saying it's not on here, or?
Yeah, it says using ARPA funds on page two of the minutes. Yeah, it wasn't listed on this ARPA report.
And there is one, one more thing that needs to be added to the cable funds, and I was drawing a blank on it, and I asked Dana and also Dor, or Amy, and they both drew a blank on it today, so I know there's one more thing that needs to be added to cable funds. It was also approved at a prior meeting that wasn't on here.
For?
I don't remember.
Now, that, that might explain my next question.
Oh, there we go. Maybe you got the answer to it.
Well, I don't have the answer. I just, your, your point might be an answer once we find it. But if we, if you look at the township of Bruce bills and stuff, the very first page is a budget item. And in the second group of expenses, it's, the fourth line down is cable TV fees, and it shows an adjustment, adjustment of 63032. Oh, that is the right number, but somehow the budget numbers are different. One's 110 and one's 104, 500. So no, that won't answer the question, but there's a difference in the budget numbers between the two, uh, reports.
Cable funds and the, this is older, isn't it? Frank, the cable.
Yeah, this, this sheet is a little older, yeah.
So this should really reflect the 104, five?
Yeah.
So we really have less money available, then?
Yeah.
It really should be the 40?
Yeah, I think this was given to us the week prior to.
Okay.
Budget coming up.
So that doesn't answer your question, Mike?
No. I'm, Dana, she looked it up and we had the answer yesterday, and for some reason today, when I asked it again, everybody forgot. So there is something that will be added, obviously, that we don't remember. But there's no motion on this. It's just that we appreciate the update.
Yeah, it's just an update and maybe we need to decide what to do with the rest of the priorities. I know, I know the parking lot is in desperate need, so I don't know what we want to do about that.
Getting kind of late in the year right now.
Yeah.
So unfortunately.
Yeah, but the, the point is, though, with the ARPA funds, you have to approve them by a certain date and you have to spend them by a certain date. I think the approval, what is it, the end of 24?
Yeah, we got time, yeah.
So we could always table.
Right.
And maybe do another session since we started late here today.
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do in the meantime for the parking lot for that one pothole is like?
I'll take care of it. Yeah, I'll get it.
Lose a child in it.
Oh.
You can throw some stuff in there temporarily, like they do at Cetus.
Yeah, Bob and I've put the, took care of the one hole here and we will get, we'll, I'll recruit them and I'm sure I can get them to help me do that other one. I, you know, so we'll take care of it. It's not going to take the, you know, take the hole out of there, but it's not going to take the, the driveway's still in bad shape.
Not going to lose a baby over it. Yeah, I can help if you need help.
All right, let's move on. Um.
Thank you, Mike.
Item seven A, or under new business, seven A, our wireless internet presentation. Frank, you want to go?
Yeah, so, um, I was approached, uh, by a couple of young guys, um, with the internet, proposal, wireless internet. So as everybody knows, we've been having issues in the township regarding, um, um, internet service. And, uh, I met with these two gentlemen and they put together a package, a proposal for us. Um, so they're going to do a presentation on it and hopefully it could fix our problem as well as a lot of the residents that have been complaining to us. So I'd like to introduce Eli Natke and Steve Porter from Orange Cloud. So, I'd like to introduce Eli Nakhle and Steve Porter, from Orange Cloud.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Steve.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Good morning.
Can you introduce yourself?
He's such two young guys, I don't know how young I feel.
You're younger than us.
Yeah, right.
Everybody's younger than us. Steve, Steve, what's your last name again?
Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R.
And, and Eli's?
Uh, Nakhle, N-A-K-H-L-E-H.
Thank you.
You said L-E-H?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so, um, we met with Frank for a couple other reasons at the same time. We talked about the tower, and I guess that was how this whole thing came about.
Mm-hmm.
Um-
On hip road.
On hip road. We looked at a couple other options, we talked about AirAdvantage, underserving customers, um, with ru- rural broadband being like the biggest push coming down from the state of Michigan, homes being underserved with internet. We brainstormed this idea, and, and I'll let Eli speak to it a little bit here, while-
Sure, um, so, the thought was that there's this tower that's underutilized on hip road. Um, AirAdvantage's on the tower today, um, and it's currently servicing, uh, I'm not sure exactly how many residents in the community, but they're currently servicing, uh, residents in the community with wireless internet to the home. Um, we, uh, we want to come in and provide a better service, um, for those residents. We do feel that there's a lot of complaints about the service that's coming out of AirAdvantage, so we want to come in and help sortify that and, and get internet to the home, especially to residents that, uh, can't get service either from AirAdvantage, or Comcast, uh, Xfinity, or, um, AT&amp;T, or anybody that's, that, uh, that's currently trying to service the area of the township. So we feel we can, uh, definitely hit those areas, uh, those residents that need it the most. And what we wanted to present was a proof of concept for, uh, two months or so, uh, to prove that, uh, our engineering would work in this area. So we have, we do have a couple of residents that we've al- already discussed, uh, being part of the proof of concept, the testing phase, uh, and they've agreed to allowing us to, um, to put the equipment in, in their homes and on the tower, if that's available.
And simultaneously, there has been some residents that have been calling, complaining about the internet, and wanting to, you know, wanting something done, like, you know, when is it gonna happen, all that stuff, you know? One of the residents is actually here, Brian, who has a unique situation, who actually lives in Sterling, but needs to come here to Bruce for family reasons. And he works from home, and he needs really high-speed internet, no matter what he's tried, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, at your father's house, nothing works.
Yeah, that's where I grew up at, and I actually live off of Keating right now, but, yeah, I've called AirAdvantage, they won't, I can't do anything. And because we, we weren't grandfathered in to have, uh, fiber, AT&amp;T won't even allow them to hook up to my, my parents' house. So, unfortunately, my dad fell ill, I moved back out to Romeo with my girlfriend, and now I'm gonna be staying with him out of his house at Thirty-Six Mall, or it just seems that Thirty-Six in DeQuinder is almost like a, a dead zone, even with cellular, uh, coverage, I can't, it's very spotty. And, you know, if they can help out, I'm more than willing to work with them, to be a case study, anything would be better than not having-
So you're one of the residents that are gonna be, is the other resident have the same type of situation that Brian has, is that different?
Well, he has two neighbors.
Yeah, I have two neighbors, they're from DeQuinder, east on Thirty-Six Mall, or there's three of us, and we cannot get any internet. So we're willing to do whatever it takes to work with them and, and see if it works.
Are there other dead zones in the township that might-
Well, so, yeah, so Lisa then has been communicating with her resident, and she sent the information over to me, um, yesterday, I think it was, and I sent the gentleman an email, telling him to call, get ahold of me. He called me today, and he lives on the west side, on the, on the east side of M-53, he lives over on Brown Road and Wire, somewhere around there.
And that's another dead zone.
And that's another dead zone, so it's kind of a perfect scenario, we got people on opposite sides of M-5, and, well, actually, two parts of the township, that, you know, we can do a case study with these guys and see what, what we come up with.
And, and that was like the, the main point of coming here tonight, to see if we could seek approval on a case study. We would also look to, look at a business as a case study as well, and try it out that way. We don't have a business picked out, because we wanted to get approval.
So-
Thank you.
Are you ready for questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, wait, I, so, is there a cost to this?
I got you. First question, no.
There is no cost to the township, um, it's the use of the tower that we're looking to, uh, gain access to. So, and there would be obviously rental fees, or whatever it is for the tower, um, in question. But the cost to the residents for, during the phase of, uh, testing, there is no cost.
So this is a test case for you guys to see if you can deliver the service, and then create a potential business opportunity for yourselves?
That's correct.
And for us, because we make money on it.
And for us, because then they would, uh, they would be, we would-
They would rent space out of the tower.
Royalty for using that tower.
Is there any interest in buying a tower?
Uh, there may be, but we haven't really explored that option yet.
Okay, thank you.
So what we would like to do during that testing phase, as well as, while we're gonna establish connectivity with, uh, um, three potential residents, uh, we'd also like to, um, put up a, uh, survey to see which residents would be interested in, um, potential internet access, so we'd-
So you, you get a p- handle on kind of potential customer base?
Correct.
So what do you need from us?
Uh, approval on the tower?
Yeah.
Approval to put your equipment up there?
Yes.
To put the equipment on and do a two-month trial.
That's right.
Is what they're looking for.
Would that be a gratis from us, just to do the experiment, or would we charge a rental fee?
No, I'm, I'm not looking to charge them, I mean, I-
So we would give them the proof of concepts, to see if it helps the residents?
We want them to prove the concept, and then, then we'll work out the details.
So the only cost to them would be their equipment, and then whatever they need to do with the residents. Now, do you guys need repeater towers, like, I, I know the last provider that we had, AirAdvantage, or even before that, Silverus Inc., or LLC, whatever they called themselves, they needed repeater towers to, to service areas of the township. I don't know if that's something that makes sense to you guys, or?
Yes, they're, it's gonna be based on the surveys that we're gonna, um, produce for each resident, or the residents in the area. Some areas are heavily wooded, some areas are highly elevated. So depending on where they are, we might need to put a, you know, a forty-foot pole on property somewhere, and then, uh, that would be our repeater tower, correct?
And that'd be part of all your proof of concept and all that, true.
Do you want to ex- go through your presentation, or, you know, this, uh?
Sure.
Were you talking about utilizing this tower too?
So this would be part of one of the phases, um, is to bring, uh, internet, which I believe there's already some internet capacity coming to here from the tower.
Yes, we have a hotspot here.
So while you're doing this, there's no charge to the residents either, right? Because you guys are just doing a business concept, see if it's worth the while for you guys to bring that internet service here?
That's, that's correct, during the-
And if it works, and you get enough interest, that would be a business plan for you guys?
Yes, correct. So, during, like I said, during the first phase, um, the proof of concept, uh, if everything goes well, we will probably come back to the board here, I guess, and, and present our case studies, our findings, uh, let you know what, uh, what we came up with, and then present phase two of that option. So currently, in phase two, we can hit everything north of the Ford proven grounds, um, and, uh, wet, or east of the Ford proven grounds. Possibly like around a hundred, uh, between a hundred and twenty and two hundred, uh, residents. Obviously, depending on, um, approval from the residents, if they, if they're willing to move forward. We went conservative with the amount of residents, so we, if, if we're approved to do this, phase two would be about ten residents per month. So in the course of twenty-twenty-three, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty residents, uh, for approval.
And, and we picked that number, we can handle the growth, we want to, we don't want to suffer the integrity of the product. We want to deliver a better product at a reasonable price point, that's, obviously, AirAdvantage kinda set the bar pretty low, so we want to keep the standard high, and we want to have quality checks in place to ensure that.
What's that financial plan you guys got in here, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
So that would be the, um, consider the rental agreement for the tower, or, uh, whose township?
What's five, six, and seven percent represent?
Uh, five percent for twenty-twenty-three, would be the rental for the tower, uh, based on, based on the-
Oh, this is what you're looking at, your subscription-
Correct.
Numbers, okay, got it.
Subscription, yeah, where you see Bruce, that would be the, the fees that the township would receive.
Can you tell us a little bit about you guys and the company?
Sure, so, um, we have a, actually, a managed services, managed services company in Auburn Hills, Quantum Services Group.
What's it called?
Quantum Services Group.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're a data center, um, we service, um, mostly commercial, almost-
I'm starting to twitch, because the last company we had was in the same business.
The last company you had?
Frank, you're twitching too.
If we're servicing the township, or?
No, that's an inside joke.
Just giving you a hard time, sorry.
No, it's not, it's not funny yet, maybe in a couple years it will be.
Sorry, well, I'm really sorry, um, we're not like that, so, uh, we've been in business for about twenty-three years, since nineteen eighty-nine. And it's, every year has been steady growth, there hasn't been a negative year.
And you guys are in the, in addition to the data center services, I presume you are in the internet provider services?
Correct.
Residential business?
Uh, again, we're mostly commercial, ninety-nine percent is commercial, yes.
Yeah.
So, but yes, we are in the internet.
Who are some of your bigger internet customers? That, names we've recognized, maybe?
Macomb, Michigan Works.
There are, Michigan Works is, is one of them.
From Macomb, St. Clair, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there, uh, so since we're a data center, I can't really divulge client information, uh, that's in the data center.
Okay, no, I'm not looking about the data center, I'm just like, like, who do you provide internet services to?
They would be the ones that are, are receiving internet from us.
Oh, I see, so you're, you're combining data center services?
With internet services, correct.
Okay, is that like cloud services, or is it internet in addition to cloud?
Um, it's, it's both.
Okay.
Yes.
I have questions.
Yes.
So we have, AirAdvantage is using the tower right now, and people do, do receive service from AirAdvantage, how are you gonna work with them? Are, are you guys gonna take over, and AirAdvantage's gonna go away, or what's, what's, I guess I don't quite understand what?
So, then, there's no conflict of interest here, but we currently service the tower with internet. Uh, we provide internet to the tower itself today, and AirAdvantage uses that internet service. There, there's, we are able to position our equipment on the tower without affecting AirAdvantage's equipment, or their service to their customers.
That's confusing to me.
How much, uh, how much room is on that tower? Well, so there's room, there's room for AirAdvantage right now, there's Blakes is on there as well.
Uh, well, Blakes is part of the AirAdvantage.
Just a regular customer.
Okay. So if you were to come in, there's room to put your equipment in, is there room for another company to come in, to, like, so let's say, to put an antenna on there to use for radios?
Yes, so-
Plenty of room for that.
There's not plenty of room, the, the tower is still subject to wind, so we can't overload the tower with equipment, otherwise it's, it won't sustain, um, heavy winds or, or any kind of weather. So, there is a threshold that you have to meet to put equipment on the tower. There's enough room on the tower right now, because AirAdvantage is not using capacity at all.
Okay.
Um, to, if, depending on how many, I guess, tenants you want to put on the tower, or rentals, uh, there's, there's enough for a couple other vendors, yes.
Okay. And that's, and you're talking about the kind of equipment that you use?
Yeah, these, these-
You're doing the three-sixty thing, is what you're telling me?
Correct, these dishes that are gonna go up on the tower are rather large.
Okay.
At the size of, of the podium, for example. So there's, right now, like I said, there's just AirAdvantage who doesn't use a whole lot of room on the tower. We would come in and put enough to cover what we need, um, you know, two hundred, five hundred residents.
And your confidence structurally, that tower can handle what you want to put, at the height you're gonna put it at?
Absolutely, we've been ha- helping to manage and maintain the tower over the years.
So are you like a subcontractor to AirAdvantage, or?
Not to AirAdvantage, to Silverus.
Oh, to Silverus.
When, when it was Silverus, yes.
But you own the inter- you own the internet line, uh, the software coming in there, I guess maybe, I don't know, the cable line, whatever you want, that's yours, and you provided that to Silverus, and now you're providing it to AirAdvantage?
That is correct.
So you are a subcontractor to AirAdvantage today, right?
The subcontract-
We're a vendor, we're a vendor of AirAdvantage.
They're a subcontractor.
Yeah, okay.
But my question is, is so, AirAdvantage is now using that tower and has customer base, you guys are gonna come in and be a competitor then, and try to reach out to the same people that AirAdvantage is reaching out to? Are you gonna actually work with AirAdvantage, possibly increase their capabilities of their equipment, to provide the customers that AirAdvantage has right now? Are you gonna try to steal their customers? I'm just, I guess my question, it's two, two internet providers on one tower, it's a small little community, you know, I just want to know how that's gonna work out?
That, that actually is very common to have multiple providers on a tower. Um, we are servicing the tower for internet today, we're not actively going to try and steal customers from AirAdvantage, but we're gonna offer another service, I mean, not to, not to make it light, but it's similar to having like a Burger King or McDonald's on the corner. We're not there to steal customers from McDonald's, but we're there to provide an additional service for residents that need it.
So Air, AirAdvantage currently are through prior ownership of Silverus, AirAdvantage has multiple repeater towers in the community currently?
Yes.
Are you able to use those repeater towers, or is that something that you are, have no access to those repeater towers? So those areas that are being fed by AirAdvantage, because of direct line of sight, or whatever the case might be, and using those repeater towers, you will have to figure out a way to also put a tower in, in those locations, in order to get internet to, like, those customers?
So our proposal today is just based off of the hip road tower, and then additionally, at a later date, the tower here, uh, at the, at the hall. So we have looked at, uh, the other towers, the other, um, points, to see if we can get to those access, we're just waiting to get back feedback on who owns those towers. AirAdvantage doesn't own the towers, they just have rental rights on them.
You're talking about where the repeaters are?
Yes.
They do not own the repeaters, you're saying?
From what we've seen so far, we haven't, they have, they're not-
We need to clarify that too.
Own a rec- own a record.
Yeah, because there is hardware there, and it needs to be owned by somebody, it's either owned by the, the main tower owners, or it's owned by the AirAdvantage, so we need to get that clarified, for sure.
AirAdvantage does not own the repeater towers, or you're not sure?
Not that we're aware of.
They own their gear on there.
Yeah, they own the equipment that's on the tower.
Oh, they own the gear that's on the repeater towers, but not necessarily the repeater tower itself. So I think the question Mike was asking, I don't know if he got it answered, is, would you be able to use those repeater stations, or would you have to put up your own, because you wouldn't be allowed to use theirs?
No, that's what we, that's what we're actively working on, is trying to get access to those towers, we don't need those towers for our-
For your concept, okay.
Current, yeah, current proposal.
That helps clarify, I think, but that's an interesting question, who does own those towers?
But you, part of your conceptual, part of your, um, what you're working on is to try to obtain customers, but without having, uh, hardware out there, how are you gonna?
Who does have repeater?
I'm, I'm, a prime example, I have a repeater tower at my, on my building.
Mm-hmm.
And it services twenty-five of the residents around me, because of the, you know, I guess, topographical, I mean, how would they, would have two of those residents in that, how did those twenty-five wanted to go ahead and try your service? How would you, I mean, you're gonna send out a survey, but how can you survey somebody you can't even offer them service?
Well, that, that would be the point of the survey, is to see who has interest in getting better internet. And if they do present, uh, a request, hey, we would, we don't have good internet today, we would like new internet, we would like to see if you can service us, we at that point would, um, determine the best course of action for that area.
But to your point, on your property, that tower, right, with their gear, who owns that tower?
Well, that was the question we were just asking, and far as Ike was concerned, I thought that the tower would be owned by the, whoever owns the tower, the main tower itself on Thirty-Six Mall Road, plus the hardware, you know, mounting hardware generators and everything else should be owned by the, the same company, but, I mean-
But in your ca- on your property, you're saying that you don't own it, they do?
He don't have a tower, he doesn't have a tower, he has a, a repeater on his barn.
On the barn, I got you, I got you.
It's not a tower.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
I have a tower.
Oh, you have a-
Oh, you do?
And again, the tower I have is not capable of wind shear, handling much more equipment and much more weight on the tower than what's already currently there.
I think if we review the, the contract that we have when we purchased the tower, let's see if, if that includes those others.
Well, they don't know either, so we don't know that answer.
But we might know in our contract, we just don't have it right now.
Right.
So you don't own the tower, though, that's on your property?
Yes, we do.
No, on his property.
No, the, I'm sorry, it's on-
Oh, on his.
On yours.
No.
No, Mike doesn't own it.
I currently have no, I, I, basically, I get, um, free internet.
No, no, ask if you own the tower.
No, I don't own the tower.
You have a lease agreement with AirAdvantage, don't you?
Lease agreement, but I don't own the tower. That was, tower was installed by Silverus when it was originally.
Okay. Do you have, do you remember the size of the tower? Was it a forty foot or a?
I think it's, um, it was thirty and I think they added on a section and maybe put it, they might have put it up to forty, you know?
Okay.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So here's, here's a question for you. What's preventing AirAdvantage from doing the same thing you're doing to put the same type of technology you're, you want to use to provide improved internet service?
There's nothing preventing them from doing it, but they're not doing it. So, and they've actively said they're not going to do it.
They have told you that?
No, they haven't told us. We haven't discussed it with them, but they have.
Here's my concern, as you guys do that, they find their customer base is eroding and then they go, oh, I'd like to keep my customer base. I'd like to go put something similar on the tower.
Yeah, that's, that's great, that's.
That's good for the citizens.
That's competition, right.
Can the tower hold both you and him with this, with equipment the size of that podium?
Yes.
What's the difference in equipment you're going to install that they don't have currently to offer better service, I guess?
The equipment that they currently have on the tower, for example, on Hip Road, is, uh, old, old equipment. And it's not, it's subpar, it's not able to compete. They haven't put any infra- any money into the infrastructure.
So they're not, they're not providing the technology that's required to service their customers, is the bottom line.
Are you, are you, are you talking five G, um, five G service for internet?
We're not, no, it's not, it's not five G. It won't compete with the, uh, cell service in the area.
But we don't, we have right now currently a moratorium. We don't allow five G in the community.
You don't allow, right?
We do not allow it on our private individual tower.
We are, we are not, it is not five G.
Right.
But to do this trial, you don't need anything but that tower.
That's correct.
And our approval for use.
So there's nothing for us to lose, nothing that's going to cost us anything. You just want to put your equipment up there to see if we can serve residents that are utilized, like.
I'm assuming there's a contract that needs to be signed with respect to liability and all that too, right? To allow you access to that tower?
Yeah, there would be a, I guess, a rental or lease contract from the township.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the concept first.
Just for the trial period.
For the trial period?
Yes.
And you guys have done this trial before?
We have.
In others areas?
Mm-hmm, yes, we have.
What, what are your, I mean, what are your rates? Let's put that way, what kind of rates are you going to be? Like, if, you know, we kind of got an idea what AirAdvantage rates are, you're going to comparable, are you cheaper than AirAdvantage for better service, more? Is it going to be unaffordable, like we just had with our water rates?
So, um, so I'll, right now, the current service you're receiving from AirAdvantage is, I think, are averaging around ten megabytes, uh, for internet.
Ten's the lowest speed, I think, right, if I'm not mistaken, right, which is like a fifty, sixty dollar a month package?
Right. Uh, our equipment that we're putting in.
That's the middle package.
Ten megabyte.
Oh.
That's what I was paying.
Yeah, for ten mags.
For ten mags, yeah.
So the equipment that we're putting in isn't capable of going that low. Uh, we're going to be starting right around anywhere from.
Good problem to have.
Yeah. Anywhere from thirty mags to, uh, a hundred mags. Um, and the, the cost would be somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred dollars.
It's going to be a little bit more.
That's very competitive.
That would, you're saying that to have the thirty mags, at least thirty mags of seventy-five to a hundred?
That's correct.
That's what they would, the consumer would pay?
Yes.
That's going to be part of your study, right?
Yes.
You'll, you'll get a flavor if customers are willing to pay that.
Yeah, and, um, Brian, Brian is pretty much at the furthest point from the tower, so it'll be a good.
So if it works with you.
I mean, seventy-five to a hundred, I'm paying Comcast right now, just internet alone, we're paying eighty-five dollars a month.
Yeah.
So that's.
For what, what, is it called meg? What meg or speed?
It's, yeah, it's thirty over thirty right now.
Okay.
So that would be, if I can do that, that'd be, and at that price point.
You guys might be too low for Brian.
In that case, yeah, hold on, wait, the pricing.
How many mags?
But don't raise it, okay?
Yeah.
I have that, I don't.
Oh, you don't.
If whatever she got, she got the highest one I could have at her house right over here.
I mean, and, and if we're going to compare apples to apples, Comcast is a coax, best effort solution, we're not doing that. We're doing like a dedicated line to everybody's house. It's a point of sight line, but it's a line, so we're not sharing bandwidth like public networks. So you're not going to see that dip at your house when all the kids get home and stream or watch TV or play video games.
Right. So the, the difference really isn't in the size of the internet connection, thirty mags or fifty mags or whatever. It's how fast that internet connection gets to you and back. Comcast, for example, uh, their latency or the speed it gets to the home is about thirty to forty milliseconds. Doesn't sound like a lot, but ours would be somewhere around ten. Which, which is perfect for, you know, a case study where they need.
Because you use a different type of technology solution.
We're, we're using, similar to a fiber connection. Which is great for video, uh, web presentations, Teams meetings.
Large CAD files.
Large CAD.
The same.
Uh, I guess I, you lost me. So you're actually putting a cable?
No, no, no. When you're talking about line, you're talking about line of sight.
Line of sight, sorry, line of sight.
Not a, not a physical line.
So whatever, there's foliage in the way, trees, I mean, you're not able to penetrate those, right?
Some areas we are. Uh, the equipment that we use, depending on how dense it is, if it's not that very dense, we can shoot right through it. But if it is pretty dense, which there are a lot of areas like that in Bruce Township, we can go and set a pole in that area. Um, of course, with approval from the residents, and then from there, we can get to, uh, similar to setting a point for a tower.
Like a repeater, kind of a repeater?
Yeah, if anyone wants.
So regard, regards to the pricing, I mean, I'm looking at the sheet over here for twenty twenty-three, if you have ten customers on there, we, we would receive fifty dollars a month.
Correct.
Is that what your proposal is? It's five dollars per customer, basically, until, obviously, the price, until it, until it increases. And then once you get up to a hundred customers, then we're at five hundred dollars a month.
Correct.
Would you say? If I'm not mistaken, I think that till, Silverus and AirAdvantage is somewhere sitting around a hundred customers, um, don't quote me, but, you know, I know it's real close. So if you were able to achieve what they currently have, that would be our maximum income on that tower would be five hundred dollars a month. But I know you, hopefully, you're going to get more customers, but.
Yes.
In the meantime, from the time that you go from, let's say, five customers up to a hundred customers or two hundred customers. Which could take a while by the time you get, if you're just going to try to reach the customers right around the, the, the tower itself without putting repeaters in. We, we may be taking a very huge financial loss compared to what we're getting from AirAdvantage right now and maybe jeopardize that contract we got from AirAdvantage.
So I have a question. It was a follow-up to that, Mike.
What?
Is would you be willing to pay some minimum level regardless of the number of customers? So that you guys bear some of the risk of promoting your product and we don't bear all the risk of promoting your product with respect to the lease agreement?
Sure. So there, there were a couple of different options. One option was that we pay rent on the tower, similar to the way AirAdvantage is paying rent on the tower today. And there wouldn't be the additional, um, revenue that would come if we had two hundred customers or three hundred customers. And it would just be a flat rental fee.
Here's what I'm suggesting is a hybrid of that.
Right.
Where there's some minimum level that you pay.
And as the customer base.
And then if you hit that threshold and go over, then we, we reap some of the rewards of your additional business, but we have some minimum threshold. And I don't know what that is, maybe it's fifty customers or sixty customers or something, that we would get regardless of how many customers you have.
Right, we, that, absolutely, we could do it that way as well. We were hoping they.
That way there you have some skin in the game to promote your customers at least to that minimum level.
But this is a potential also for other customers, not just currently without internet or that are using AirAdvantage. This is for, also for down, maybe, I don't know if it would be phase two, but Comcast customers currently.
Absolutely.
And anybody who's using any other service provider right now.
That's correct.
Because I'd be interested. So, yeah, okay.
I mean, the product, the product's agile, it's scalable, so every household has different needs. It's not like you have to have this package because you do this. It's, hey, try this, we can always upgrade. Start low and go up.
You said the radius would be fifteen miles, fifteen mile radius?
Well, that's for clear line of sight, yes. We can, we can go anywhere as long as we can get to that clear line of sight.
So potentially, this could go into, you could be obtaining customers from Elmont.
Elmont.
Dryden, I, I mean, north of us as well.
Yes.
Because that is the far end, you know, nor- more northern end of Bruce Township, so. Okay, that's great news.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of potential for this.
So I'd like to, to see possibly what the monthly rental fee would possibly be until you get moving, you know? You know, until you, like Mike said.
The hybrid approach?
Right, yeah. I just know it's going to take a while to get, you know, your feet on the ground and get things going and build a customer base. And then, like you said, where the one's going to be.
You have to test it first.
Correct.
Yeah, if the concept is doable, I would like to see a different scenario on payment with that hybrid approach personally.
But for now, are we going to vote on approval for the phase one?
I'll suggest a motion if you don't mind.
Yes.
Oh, we don't have a contract or anything.
No, my motion will include that. So I make a motion to approve the concept, contention upon an acceptable agreement for the concept plan. Uh, acceptable to Bruce Township, and I would suggest that someone review it, then those contracts, I don't know, Frank, do you feel like?
I think it should be with attorney.
Okay. So, subject to review by our attorney, that is acceptable. Two-month concept plan?
Two months.
With, uh, with what you proposed here?
Yes.
You probably already have a contract you've used to work with other people.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't anticipate a problem, but it's always nice to have someone who's an expert at it look at it.
A second. Second by DiGiorgio. Do we have any other discussion?
Who initiated this?
The, the plan?
No, so you, you guys coming here? Thank you, Frank.
Good on you, Frank.
Yeah, people like Brian that constantly calling and, and the complaints.
Yeah, if it work, if it works and provides better service to our residents and, and we can have another lease agreement that's.
Absolutely.
Acceptable to us, that's good.
Come to the next sewer and water meeting.
I mean, al- also with the proof of concept, we would love their feedback. We'd love to track the metrics, um, bandwidth, and, and just make sure we're hitting these thresholds. Like I said, if it's not great, I mean, it's not working, it's not going to.
They would also like to add a couple of businesses in their, in their case study as well to see how they would do.
Yeah, definitely.
Do you have businesses in mind that are currently experiencing poor service?
Uh, I don't, but, uh, I don't know.
There's a pie company that might be.
Who?
A pie company.
Uh, I mean, I would prefer somebody like High Cider Mill, but he's got a repeater and then I even reach out to Blakes because Blakes is a higher user as far as, uh, credit card machines and things like that. But they're also a customer of AirAdvantage, so I don't know how that's going to go with you guys.
We actually have approval from Blakes.
Okay. So that would be the business I would highly recommend. If you need a second one, I could get you a second one. It would probably be a, a larger business, you know, that, where they work a lot out of home, you know?
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Debbie Obrich, thanks to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
She was our old treasure, who was a big advocate of internet service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
You need clarification on the motion.
Yeah, so, yeah, we got a.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote. We had a.
That's okay, you can sit down.
Well, wait a minute, might be, might, might be more discussion.
No, no, okay.
So is there any other dis- we got a motion by Tremblay, second by, um, Frank DiGiorgio. Do we have any other discussion? If not, can we get a roll call, please?
Can we get clarification on the motion?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. So we're approving the concept plan pending an acceptable contract terms for the concept plan after review of, by the Bruce Township attorney.
Second, yeah, second by DiGiorgio, but the concept plan includes a monthly rental fee?
No, this is just the concept plan. We would have to get to that if, if successful, then we'll talk about what the real contract would look like.
Okay. Second by DiGiorgio, any other discussion? Did you get the whole motion?
Yeah.
I believe I did, yes.
You want to repeat it back? Or you want me to repeat it again?
To approve concept plan pending acceptable contract terms, um, being reviewed by township, with review by township attorney.
Perfect, thank you.
And we'll take a roll call whenever you're ready.
Tremblay?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Eli and Steve, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
We're excited.
This is exciting, yeah.
I hope you're successful in your concept.
Okay.
This is great news for the township.
Moving on to item seven B sewer.
You guys provide water services.
Um, item seven B sewer and water, um, billing?
Uh, so, we've had quite a few weeks here since we lost someone in the office and we, we've been doing some, uh, self-auditing of our billing system. Found some interesting issues. Um, Dana has kind of picked up the slack and done the omen's, uh, the omen's job of refiguring the whole. Every time she goes to, to bill somebody, she try, she finds something, an issue. So we've got it, we hope, under control. And we're still working on, everybody's worked on it. Bob has spent a lot of time on it, our office has. I, um, we need to hire somebody for this job, for this position. It's a part-time position, but I don't want to rush into it. Because we need somebody who really know, understands billing, hopefully, um, utility billing. So I would like to propose, um, meanwhile, we're kind of understaffed. I would like to be able to hire maybe an intern for a couple of months for like fifteen dollars an hour. Just to pick up some of the slack while we, um, I've already, um, got the, I've already posted the job. But I, I want to take the time with election in, coming up, there's so much going on. So I'm looking to hire somebody in January to fill this, um, with the utility billing position. But meanwhile, I, I would like to hire maybe an intern, a college student for two months only. Yeah, actually put a limit on it. Dorothy will be leaving, um, maybe from, uh, the end of November to the end of January, just so we can kind of catch up. And I'm just throwing that out there for some discussion, see what you think about it.
So Dorothy leaving at the end of November?
That's the plan, yeah. And maybe even sooner because she, she's really here for elections and.
So, so here's, the, this is an interim fix, so we, you really need a billing person, right?
Yes. Well, it, that, that position is a billing, utility billing, but it's also, um, support staff. It's, um, reception, uh, the window, helping with elections. It's up to twenty-five hours a week, that specific job. But I don't feel like we're ready to, um, to fill it yet. I really want to be, because we've been, that billing department has been, had like five hands on those, that billing in the last couple of years. And then COVID was in the middle of it, so, uh, we're just starting to get back on our feet with that, while there's an election going on. So I just would like to have someone, and I've got a couple, somebody who's interested in the job, I don't think that she is qualified. But if she's interested in the internship, is what I'll call it, uh, it might help us to determine whether or not she could handle that full-time job.
So would it be a pro-basianary job and?
Well, it could be.
If she can handle the billing, we'd keep her?
It, it could be, yeah. I, I don't think that's going to, I, I just would like to have somebody to step in to help us with the filing and the phones and things like that for two months. While we kind of get a grasp on this.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem because you're just replacing.
Yeah, totally.
Lindsay right now that we, we were short because Lindsay's gone.
Yeah.
And he, it's basically just going to take Lindsay's hours and is she still going to be responsible for doing the billing?
No, I, no, because there won't be enough time to train someone, so this is just to help with the other aspects. Dana has kind of got things under control. She'll be here till the end of November. Amy ha- Amy did the billing before, so there will have to be another, there will be another billing cycle in December.
Wait, you said Dana's going to be here till the end, Dana's leaving too?
Dana's leaving, yeah.
Oh, well, that's a whole different issue.
Exactly, so.
So who do we have to replace Dana?
Well, I also got that posted and I got a couple of people in mind, but I, um, I haven't hired anybody yet. Everybody's, you know, we're in the middle of the election, so I'll wait until after the election really to, to do some interviewing.
Hopefully we'll get some who's qualified because she's got to train them. I mean, she wants to leave the first of December.
My plan is to try and have that person in place by the last week of November, so she can, or he or she can overlap with Dana.
So you really have two positions? You really have two positions, right? Dana's the county position.
Right.
And, uh.
Which is, yeah.
But these are just replacement positions, right, for people that have been here?
Yeah, I'm not initiating instituting anything.
So it's not additional, it's not really additional cost of the township?
No, in fact, I was going to suggest the intern be fifteen dollars an hour, but that doesn't include, you know, the, the other job includes five percent, um, benefits and sick time. I wouldn't include any of that. It would just be a flat fifteen. It would just be a flat fifteen dollars an hour for two months' time.
So, I guess
So I'm gonna ask a question that I normally don't ask. Is that enough?
Fifteen dollars an hour?
Who is it? Did you have somebody in mind, you said already?
I have a couple people. I, I was, I was calling around, um, because I thought Oakland University, you know, just find an intern. Somebody who's going to school and needs, you know, a couple hours. I don't know, my, I, I'm still having trouble finding someone to do the recording.
Yeah, I, I think fifteen is kind of low personally.
I agree.
I think eighteen might be better.
So the starting salary for that job, the part-time job that Lindsey had is fifteen seventy-five an hour.
You're gonna do at least, at least that, I think. Because you're competing with other, other labor markets and that price point is right where they're short of labor and you're gonna need someone who's got a little bit on the ball to do billing.
I agree. I think the wage is too low, especially what's going out there.
Are you allowed to do more than fifteen seventy-five?
I think we can, but I don't know if that then, if that is a problem with union, the union and they're starting.
Personally, I don't think it is because part-time employees are not in the bargaining unit. The only, the only issue that you might have, but I don't think, I still don't think it's an issue, there's starting wage for a union, a, a bargaining, a full-time position in the bargaining unit, I think it starts at seventeen, don't it? Seventeen fifty? In that township?
No, because
What is it?
It's right around this, that amount.
Yeah.
Fifteen seventy-five.
But fifteen seventy-five is it someone at a skill level of a billing type person?
Right, and also, uh, they start with sixteen percent, you know, the benefits and all the other stuff is added to it.
Okay, so, I mean, if you would add all that, it would give them, I just think fifteen's too low, myself with the competitive marketplace we're in today. To get someone with a little bit of
I mean, that's up to us.
Grasp the billing thing.
And which I agree, I think fifteen is too low.
So we're talking about two different things. For the internship, uh, you want to say sixteen dollars an hour? And then for the other, we could start it at sixteen dollars an hour?
What's the internship?
The part, the two month.
It's the two month period, just the filler.
For just more of like an administrative.
I think, I think if you're looking at that filler to potentially be the long-term solution, I think you gotta start them off a little higher because you want a little higher caliber person. Just my suggestion.
I won't have time, I don't think, when I, for when I need them to, to interview someone specifically to take the internship anticipating they might take the other job. So I want to keep them separate. And then, then, you know, if it works out, then they, this is an advantage that they can go into at a higher rate with, with benefits and
I'm just looking at who you're gonna attract. If you attract someone at fifteen dollars an hour and they have all, all kinds of different other opportunities, they, you may not attract the right person who may be a long-term solution. That's my concern. You know, if you get, you get someone in there who's not gonna be able to do the billing, then what are you gonna do? You're kind of, you got a person in there that you anticipated maybe taking that on and they don't have the ability and/or the interest.
I have a feeling it's gonna be a hard position to fill, so that's why I want the gap measure of two months and keep it completely separate. They will see, if they come in and it works, then, then maybe that's an incentive for them to want to stay if, if the other position is a little higher. So maybe start at sixteen dollars for the, the internship and then do sixteen fifty for if they stay on. Plus they get the benefits and the
Try it, see if it works.
I mean, I can always come back.
You don't even have anybody in mind, I mean, even to replace?
I do have people in mind for both.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you think that they can do the job?
Yes, I, I'm really
Yeah, I would be more in favor of sixteen dollars an hour than fifteen.
Okay, so for the internship, okay, and then?
When you say the internship, this is an internship that could turn into something different.
Because it's a stopgap kind of thing where, yes, it could.
It's a kind of sixty-day probationary period, right? Let's see, is this person gonna work out? I, I like that approach.
Temporary part-time.
Yeah.
For a two-month.
With potential for, uh, long-term part-time, right? Is that what it is?
Yep.
But isn't that how our, basically, it's not, we're not changing the concept. I mean, even somebody like Lindsey or Danielle could have stayed on full-time and, or to go into a full-time position if something opened up, right? I mean, we're not
We're not talking about making this full-time at all.
We're not creating a new position. I want to make sure we clarify that. We're not hiring a new hire. We're actually replacing
Yeah, but the skill set we're looking for is a little different than we used to look for before. That, that's the concern is, yeah.
And I do have people in mind for the part-time position, but, uh, the transition, getting them hired and the interview and the election and all that
I know.
is kind of in the way, so.
I think, I think you should start at sixteen.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we hire and, look, hire an intern at sixteen dollars an hour for a two-month period starting the end of November to the end of January.
With potential for long-term if, if it works out?
Would you add that?
I think so.
With the, okay.
So, I mean, you can let the person know that it's a
Okay.
It's a probationary sixty-day period, but if it works out, you, long-term, part-time.
Does that have to be all part of the motion, you think?
I don't, I don't
It's up to you, Susan.
I don't think so because I can bring it back for the next one.
Okay.
It's because I'm still confused that we're trying, it sounds to me like we're trying to vote on hiring, creating a position when we've already got a position that we've already
Yeah.
vacated. So why are we even voting to approve to have somebody replace the vacated position is what I'm saying.
We're, we're approving the fact that it's gonna be for a temporary period, a two-month trial period for them.
While we hire someone we know is qualified.
And it, and at a different wage.
Yeah.
So what I need to be clarified, we're not hiring, and my point being is I just want to make sure that people don't think
It's not additive, it's replacing what we have.
Right.
With certain stipulations.
It's not a new position and we're not hiring another person to work. We're just, we are replacing actually two vacated spots we're gonna have, replacing at least one of them. I just want to make sure that point's clear.
Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse the issue.
Maybe, maybe part of the motion is, is just to say it's a replacement position. So it's clear in the minutes.
I think it's as simple as just replacing Lindsey. It's all at a new rate.
At sixteen dollars an hour for a two-month trial period.
You guys are seeing this way different than I am.
Yeah, I don't know why we gotta say trial period.
Yeah, because
Help us.
I don't see either, I don't see the people, the people I have in, the couple I have in mind can't start right away. So this to me is just a measure to, to bridge that period of
Oh, I see. So you have a person in mind, long-term, that can't start till February?
Uh, no, probably January.
Oh, I see.
But it can be whenever we, and I don't have a single person. I've had several calls this week because I put it on the MTA, so.
So we're just filling a two-month gap period?
And not including utility billing because the utility billing
Yeah, so what she's gonna be doing is everything else while Amy does the billing.
Yeah.
She'll be doing like
So you're just looking for
Servicing the counter, going up to the counter, can I help?
A Band-Aid.
I think we, what we did is we put words in Susan's mouth that aren't true. You, you're just looking for a sixty-day
Band-Aid, yeah.
Band-Aid so that you can hire the person that you want when they're available.
Yeah.
I get it. I think the motion, what was your motion again? Maybe it was, right, we were twisting it up. I get, I think I get it now. So you're hiring, you just want a sixty-day part-time person, period. It's just for sixty days.
Just an internship for a two-month period.
I'll second whatever the motion was.
So it's an intern for sixty days, period, with a stop date of January thirty-first.
Yeah.
Want me to read it back?
Sure, sure.
Motion by Kraft to hire an intern starting at sixteen dollars per hour from end of November twenty-twenty-two to end of January twenty-twenty-three.
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kraft?
I kind of knew what you meant.
Crafty?
Give Lisa a seat.
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just have, that motion, did it say the end of January twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
The end of January twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-three is what it says.
Twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
January is gonna be twenty-five.
From, from November?
November twenty-twenty-two.
End of November twenty-twenty-two.
So it's, that's a, that's not, that's ninety days.
No, end of November, end of November twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, end of November.
End of November twenty-twenty-two to end of January twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, this has been a long day.
Sounds good.
My goodness.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping us straight, Lisa.
We have been going since nine-thirty, or five-thirty, right? Or actually all day, given.
Okay. Are we moving on?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, item seven, um, B, R seven C, the Sewer and Water Committee update. You got them?
I'd already heard it.
Teresa?
Well, I already gave you the update during the other part of the meeting. I guess there's not much more that I can tell you that I didn't already say. Um, I do want to thank the residents that showed out for Culverfield and made some great suggestions on how to help get a solution to get those rates lowered. That said, what we are actually working on, and this is gonna be a repeat, is we need to see real numbers of where we actually are at and we are going to try to work backwards to come up with a pricing solution that would be equitable. It's not going to pay off the obligations that we have in the five years, but I think it will be pretty good. That said, I have nothing else really to say unless you guys have any questions for us. We had four of us that were on the committee this last meeting, which met last week. And the list of questions I did provide to Susan and it was information that we were looking for, but I will say, and this is a repeat, the answers, we got the answers at, at the town hall. Most of that stuff was answered. And again, like the suggestions, so moving forward, we'll follow up on those particular suggestions. Maybe we can get more interest from the residents now that they see that there is truly a committee and we are dedicated to making this work and, and get a good solution. So Susan, all I'm really looking for is some real numbers on both the sewer and the water fund. To be honest, I didn't realize that we were actually still in debt. The numbers I looked at led me to believe that at least the sewer was in the black, so I'll just be upfront about that. So if I can get some, uh, real numbers on where we're at, we can come up with something.
Okay, I've got the election coming up, so I
I get it. I totally understand. Like I said, most of the stuff was answered during town hall. And Frank, between the meetings, he had some great information for me anyways. Uh, we can start with that. We were hoping to have something more solid for you guys, uh, at the November meeting.
And everybody did get this letter you sent me. It was in our board packet. It wasn't in the, on, on the website, but
No problem.
Did you have any, are these, did you get answers to all your questions in?
Yeah, everything except the real, real numbers. I don't have any real numbers on, um, where the fund is actually at, the sewer fund, where it is actually at. And when I say that, I mean, it has to include the obligations that we have, not just the monthly obligations, but the long-term obligations that we have. I really need to see those numbers. I don't have those numbers. And yes, I've been coming to these meetings, but I don't take notes for the last, you know, fifteen years. So I really don't know the true numbers and that's what's going to help us. So does that answer your question on that? And this was just kind of a synopsis of the questions that did come up while we sat down and we talked.
Do we have to clarify who's part of the committee?
We already did.
Uh, we, we did.
We did that in the minutes.
Uh, and I do have it at the bottom here. The only person that wasn't, um, at the first meeting, when I had presented the four people that we had, who was not included, but I had asked the board if this person shows up in the future, can we include them, and that was Louis. And Louis was the gentleman that was here talking tonight. Very informative, smart man, and has a lot of good suggestions. But Louis did show up to our meeting and I would like to include him as officially part of our committee, which I did ask for approval at the first
If we could get in the minutes the, the names of the committee members.
One more time? Okay, so we have myself, Teresa Vito Smith, we have Paul Okanovsky, we have Janet Batani, we have Louis Perez, who was here tonight, and Gino Piscuali. And the three, myself and Paul are, I don't even know if Paul has any real interest. I'm only on sewer. The other three come directly from Culverfield, so they have a huge interest.
I just think we should document it in the minutes so we have a record of that.
Yep, yep.
Do you have all those names listed?
You have it on this, it should be right here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there anything else?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
When you do get the information you're looking for, if you could make it transparent to the board too, so that we would have that same data.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Teresa, for all you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having us on.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
I do have a question that's kind of aside.
We'll go up to
We were talking about these, oh, I'm sorry. When they were talking about those radio receivers, is everybody gonna have one on their house?
You, you currently got a, a pickup unit on your house right now, but it's called a touchpad. It's a brown, it's a little box.
That just installed recently?
It's been installed since day one, when your meter went in.
Okay, well, the, the residents today were talking about new, different meters being put on their house this week.
Well, it's not, it's not a meter. It's like an outside of your house, there's, you're gonna look, if you take a look around, there's a little square box and that's actually, currently you have a touchpad.
Okay.
Where they can go up to it and they can touch it with the device, and then that gives them the reading of what your water meter reads in the basement. That way they don't have to go down and get a physical reading.
So what did these people get this week on their house?
That's what was put on their home.
They're getting, they're getting now, we're switching over to radios instead of touchpads so that the radios are gonna transmit from your house, let's just say, to the township office without
So am I gonna get a touchpad removed and a radio put on my house?
Yes.
Everybody in, in Culverfield will have a radio?
Yes.
Do they have to get your approval to do that? Well, I'm just asking.
They technically
They're just gonna kind of come do it.
I mean, they're just gonna kind of come do it. It's a utility, it's a service. I mean,
Kind of like with
I guess if you don't want, if you don't
No, no, I just didn't understand what she was talking about, that they put a new meter, whatever, on her house, and I said
It wasn't a new meter.
So we did figure there was gonna be an option to not have one. If you decided that you did now, want a radio transmitter, whatever, you want to stay on the outside of the house, there would be in excess a charge because somebody's gonna have to read your meter, you know, every month, you know, which is, um, you know, something, so you're gonna be, there'll be an additional charge, which I don't want to say that word right now, that's for sure.
No, okay, so everybody's gonna have this radio receiver and they can drive by or they can go on a computer and, and get what the usage is and everybody's home.
Yeah, drive-by, you, you could be able to sit in one quadrant of subdivision, they could get all the reads from one quadrant of subdivision. Now it's upgraded a little bit more. We can actually get them right here to office without anybody having to go out in the field that ought to do the reads.
Okay, well, I just was confused why they were saying they are getting a new meter and I'm like
It's a radio.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, all right, moving on. Item seven D, the Bruce Township logo trademark. Mike, you wanted to add on there?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and see what the interest was from the board. Just for your information, the, uh, the Bruce mark, Bruce Township logo is not trademarked from what I believe. And we, people, there's a thing called common law where it says that you're, if you, if it's common use by your township, it's trademarked, but it's not registered anywhere, so it doesn't have a lot of clout. So if you get your trademark registered, you have more clout. But the reason I bring it up, there is, there are various Bruce Township websites out there. One of them does use the trademark and it's not the one that you have, Frank. It's, it's one that's administered by two non-Bruce Township residents. One is the supervisor of Washington and the other one is, um, a Rochester Hills resident. So I think it can be confusing to the residents, especially if it's got our logo on it, right? So it, it appears that it's an official Bruce Township webpage and it's not. So if you trademark it and you register it, you don't even have to contact them. You can contact Facebook and they'll eliminate it if you give them that it's registered. So there is, there is a cost to that, but I just brought it up for discussion. There is a township to our south that actually is pursuing getting theirs trademarked. They're a bigger township, they have more at stake. We're a smaller township. We're not a stake. So people that would use our, our logo without our permission would be denied or they would be in violation of a trademark, uh, violation. We also had someone that was using it for some political purposes. That was subsequently removed, but without any, any, uh, trademark discussion.
Is it worth a conversation to our attorney to see what is involved in that?
I can save you time on that. Washington discussed it with our attorney. Attorney's not in that field and recommended a name for it.
Okay.
So, but Washington did approve spending money and going to do it, and I just wanted to bring it up just for interest because we're not, they're triple our size, so they have more at stake with their branding. And, you know, we're kind of the sleepy, uh, country town, right, still? I mean, we have a developed area to the south, but we're Still, I mean, we have a developed area to the south, but we're not as big, and we're not as robust. Our downtown area is not as developed. If there's an interest, I'll pursue it further, but if, if there's not an interest, because there would be a cost to get it trademarked.
I was wondering, you know, ballpark-wise, what-
Somewhere south of two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Between fifteen hundred and two thousand.
Yeah, substantially less than I thought, so it might be worth.
What's the advantages there? I mean, obviously-
Advantages, that we could, we could use the trademark, like, if, if, I think Frank, you administer the official one that we, 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 that you administer. But if someone else was using it, we could have them take it down, so it would end, end some confusion with respect to what's the official Bruce Township webpage.
I, I don't, I don't see a reason, I think we should have control over our, our Bruce Township trademark, to be really honest with you. I think it-
Yeah.
It is what I feel should be township property, but is it also considered residence?
Well, it would belong, it would belong to the township of Bruce, not to the board. It would belong to the township of Bruce, including all the citizens.
Does that mean the residents have-
No, they could not.
They cannot use it.
Without the board approval.
Yeah, without board approval.
But do we want to pursue this without considering other, do we want that to be our logo?
Well, that, that was gonna bring that up. Good straight first, because Frank and I had, I had some discussion with Frank before I brought it here. Just to bounce it off Frank, and, and he said, yeah, why don't you bring it forward? But Frank had the discussion is, before we even do that, is, is that the logo that we want? It says Bruce Township with a-
It's kind of, it's just a tree, it's boring.
Yeah.
So, the other night after our, after you read that by me, sitting around Monday night, watching Monday Night Football, and I took my laptop and I started playing around in that. So, this is just something I came up with, but if anybody wants to do something else, or you're not gonna hurt my feelings here. It's just, do something a little different, kind of put in there a tree that, that we are currently have. And on the left, you'll see a little circle with farmland. On the right, you see a horse. On the bottom, you see established in eighteen thirty-three with a basket full of harvest product.
I think it's interesting. It's kind of reflective of who we are.
Yeah, that's kind of where, where I was going with that, yeah.
Yeah, so before I would, I would pursue that and make sure that we have a trademark that we all like.
Right, correct.
You don't want to trademark something and then say we don't like it.
And if, and if there's other people that want to put something out there, maybe we put it out to the residents for a vote, you know, and which one they like better.
Do that in our newsletter, maybe.
Or you could go to the high school and see if you want the art class to come up with something for fun.
This is certainly more interesting than what we have.
Yeah. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, we could put that, that's a good idea. Put it in the newsletter and-
Let people vote, yeah.
Let people come up with a, a design or whatever by a certain date. And then we'd have the public vote.
But it's also a good idea for the, to the high school. I bet they would, they'd like to have a project like that, where they can have a little competition.
So we all agree that we would like to see a different logo than what we currently have?
I think it's worth exploring.
For sure. I'd like to see how it plays out more.
I actually like this one better than what we have, personally.
You've got a couple, think of a couple of things, though, how you're gonna use it, too.
Well, you'd have to couple the trademark with a policy.
Exactly. But also for, if you're using it on, like, Mike's jacket, and how you do two-color, because some, to have this design done, you know, like if for Bruce Ta, for shirts or whatever, it could get expensive because of the multiple colors that are involved in it. So, things like that need to be considered. So maybe it is something that the high school students could do, or-
And maybe the logo is just the circle part.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I, I should have said that. I don't, I don't like that, that red in the background. I think just the circle itself.
Thank you for taking the time, Frank.
Thank you for the, putting it on the agenda.
I did it. My laptop's on the way.
Well, that's good work.
Okay, thanks, Frank.
Yep.
Well, let's move on to item seventy, the fire department new hires. Do you want to do it?
Sure. So, uh, they, the fire department is hiring two more, um, EMT, uh, employees. They are two individuals, are recent graduates from RHS, and were also the top of their EMT class. They are Jessica Kitchen and Autumn Michaels. So they want to hire them on November, starting November first, but since, uh, it has to be approved by the board, I just brought, bring it up so that we can approve it, so that they can move forward with their process. I'd like to, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the hiring of Jessica Kitchen and Autumn Michaels as new, um, Bruce Fire Department, Bruce Romeo Fire Department employees.
Support.
Support by Frank. Can we get a roll call?
I, I have a question before we go to roll call, please.
Sure.
Uh, we, clarification, these are replacement? These are new additions?
These are on paid-on-call, part-time.
Paid-on-call? Part-time paid-on-call or full-time?
Were we short on paid-on-call people, and that's why we're adding them?
We've lost, in the last six months, I think, seven employees, part-time.
Okay. So we're, we're backfilling what we lost? Okay.
I think they normally like to keep a fifteen-man roster on a paid-on-call, and I know that we've been sitting somewhere as nine, ten, you know, so we're definitely short.
So then we'll get the hoopla that we had when we hired the last two?
No, they all come, they just couldn't do it tonight, so they're coming next month.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hoopla.
Well, I mean, congratulations, welcome aboard. Maybe not a good use, not a good term.
Okay, if there's other, no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, item seven F, cemetery ordinance.
Yeah, that's, so, um, the cemetery ordinance is, so last month, we, uh, a motion was made about, uh, changing the, uh, price on plots for both, uh, the residents and the non-residents. So my mo, um, so we ha, I forgot to put a motion in that we need to clean up the ordinance. So this is the top page of our ordinance. It's just that one pair, the little bit on the bottom that needs to be updated. So we have to send it to our attorneys, you know, to, to clean up.
Who typed this up?
That was, uh, from our ordinance. That's the top page of our ordinance.
So this is, all the words are the same? You just changed the dollars, Frank?
No. This is what we were doing.
So we haven't changed them yet? That's what he's saying. We didn't amend the ordinance last time, we just increased-
To the new price increases.
Right.
Okay, to the price change.
So the only change from the existing ordinance are the dollars, right?
Yes.
In other words, we, we have lots, and we have infants and stillbirths.
So we didn't do anything with infants or stillborn. That's the same. That will remain the same. The only thing that's gonna change is where it says price per lots. Instead of saying five hundred for Bruce Township residents, it's gonna say a thousand, and it's gonna say two thousand for non-residents.
So we're just approving the ordinance in support of the action that we took last month?
But the purchase for infants and stillbirths will remain the same, five hundred and a thousand.
And this is consistent with last month, I take it?
Yeah. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, the board approves that this ordinance number one fifty-four gets sent to attorney for adjustment of the purchase price on the plots for township residents and non-residents.
I have another question.
I'll second.
I have another question, because their motion was to increase to a thousand dollars per plot for residents and two thousand for non-residents.
Right.
And the ordinance we have in front of us is five hundred and a thousand.
Right.
That's the old ordinance.
That's the old price. This right here is the old price. What you just read is gonna be the new price.
That's Teresa amending.
So what we're, what we're approving is to amend this to the prices as approved-
At the board.
At the board meeting in- in September. Okay. I wasn't able to the last, I think.
Can you read the ordinance back, or the motion back?
Motion by DeGiorgio to approve ordinance one fifty-four be sent to attorney for amendment to adjust pricing.
To the pricing as approved at the September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two board meeting.
Correct?
Yep.
Mike's a part of the interior.
I'm a Christian. Probably not.
Who's second?
Susan.
Susan. Is there any other discussion? I just feel that I think the two thousand dollars for a, a non-resident plot is way, way too much for our cemetery.
Well, you go to resurrection, they start at eighteen hundred.
Resurrection, how can you compare ours at resurrection?
Well, that's a moot point, anyway, it's already done, so.
But you know what?
Eighteen hundred at resurrection.
The motion we approved was to look at it after a year, so.
We don't have resurrection, Frank. I mean, I'm sorry to say, we, we got a cemetery out in the woods, you know.
Can't keep, um-
I get it, we need money, but that's-
The rest of the residents paying for something that they're not gonna use.
It's like, that's, that's like unaffordable. People that get buried in resurrection, different clientele. I mean, I'm, I'm, go ahead and roll call, please.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Philbrook?
No.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Frank.
Yep.
Ask a follow-up, maybe?
Sure.
So, last month, you brought up sending out a letter to all the people that had reserved things and not paid for them. What happened with that?
So we're in the process of getting hold of all the people, and we were able to do it with, um, probably like ten percent of them. But there are, uh, some names that, um, have just a name on it. No address, no phone number, not even a first name, it's just the last name. So, we've been going through Google and Facebook. I was a little bit successful by doing that. Now the next step, once the election committee, the election people in the clerk's office get done with this election, and have to have a little bit of time, they're gonna go through the voting database to see if we can find somebody. And if that don't work, um, then they're gonna be, uh, sent back. The, the, um, plots will then become up for sale. Uh, the people that we do get a hold of, they're, they're gonna be able to come in and pay what they, what they originally, what the original price that they understood was gonna be. We can't, we're not gonna charge them more. So if it was four hundred dollars, they're gonna come in, pay that four hundred, whether it's on hold or whether they put two hundred down, they owe us two hundred, and then they'll be on the story. But we need to identify who these people are and get that done. Yeah, it's, it's been a little frustrating.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Item seven G, um, scanning. Susan, you wanna take that?
Um, so, we've finished the scanning, and now we, going forward, we, we still have a few boxes, um, drawers, boxes, uh, that didn't get scanned and need to be, um, scanned. And we talked to Kevin about going forward year to year and maintaining what we have, scanning as we go. He, so he looked at what we have, uh, he talked to Dana and to, um, assessing. Assessing's pretty much done, but it's building and planning and zoning. So this would be the amount to finish what they have right now, and then we would work with him on a yearly basis. He'd come in once a year and pick up and scan, and then, uh, document destruction per box would be six dollars. This is what he came up with, what we have just now. I think it is, it's more than we will have on a yearly basis. Uh, there's some stuff that got missed. For example, Dana was saying, um, she won't have that kind of volume, uh, going forward. So this would be the most it would be. And I talked to everybody on staff about, I know if we took this money and then other monies, we could come, we could buy a scanner. Their feeling is, is they're so busy right now, they'd like the consistency of having him do it, have it be in one location, and, and yearly, just take it from them, and it's done. So, I, anticipating your question of whether or not, I'm sure somebody was curious about what, what a scanner would cost, because we did initially talk about just buying a scanner.
I think that while we're, I mean, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think while we're caught up, I know we have six more boxes to do, and like you said, talking with building and also to it planning and zoning, they're not gonna have that kind of quantity in the future.
Yeah.
That six boxes. I think it would be better just to do it, to stay up on it without purchasing a scanner. At this point, since we got it all done, price of a scanner is ridiculous. Plus, you gotta remember, we gotta service it if it, if it breaks, or repairs, or anything else.
So I was thinking if we put a, um, cap on what he, the amount we spend each time, and he, you know, ask him to let us know, if you're, you're doing this yearly, you come pick it up. If it's gonna be more than, say, two thousand dollars a year, with the exception of this price.
Wouldn't that fall under a line item in our budget? I think it would seem to me that it should, under office supplies or-
So if you want to include it in the budget, that's fine, you just do this now? Okay, that's fine with me, that works.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four seventy-two for what's the remaining documents that need to be scanned by Amira Scan.
I'll support. Any other discussion? If not, can we get a roll call, please?
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Susan. Moving on, item seven H, under new business, the GIS aerial maps. So I've got an aerial map example here. These are overhead aerial maps that we use in assessing and sometimes for any other purposes, and what they use determine, I guess, what's on the property, lot sizes. There's two of them. These are currently from two thousand and one, I think. They're twenty-one years old. We are currently looking, uh, the assessing department was kind of thinking that we may need to have them upgraded, because obviously there's been a lot of things that have been done since two thousand and one in our community as far as what's been built, people building things on their houses. Lisa Cross, our assessor, did do, uh, some work and some research on it, and she did talk with, um, Jeff Schroeder from Schrader from Macomb County, and, um, they have two hundred and ninety-two maps. What we need is two hundred and ninety-two of those, and I think, uh, price, if I'm not mistaken somewheres. Um, but basically, what has been said is ac, in order to accurately, properly requ, um, to have an efficient assessing department, we need to have good maps. And it, pretty much the recommendation is accurate maps ensure that no property is omitted and no property is assessed twice. Um, that's all part of the, um, recommendation as far as, you know, adequate and efficient, um, assessment department. So, um, there's two hundred and ninety-two of them, they're six dollars apiece. I think the total cost comes out to seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Um, they do have a PDF that we can get for free, um, on top of it, you know, um, but it's, at the same time, I mean, do we wanna, um, just use a PDF for them? Or do we actually wanna get the physical maps that, um, for six dollars a copy? You know, that was, that's the key question. I mean, these things are nice, because you can pull them out, you lay them on a table.
What's the recommendation from assessing?
They, they are kind of like, I think, both ways. I mean, and I think that the final, the way I kind of felt, it was kind of nice that we did have the maps on hand, and it was something that, and they feel that the new maps, um, are gonna have more date on them than what the old maps did.
So we currently have two hundred and ninety-two? So we currently have two hundred and ninety-two? And they're dated from two thousand and one?
Those are dated two thousand and one, and, I mean, we need two hundred and ninety-two sheets is what, according to Macomb County.
That would cover the whole.
I, I don't know if we have two hundred, if it was different back then, if it was less, maybe they're zoomed in more, maybe they're, you know, the two hundred and ninety-two, you know, is what we would be looking at getting, and those are those things, I don't know if you've seen them in the, um, in between the building and the, um, planning and zoning, there's that one rack of maps that sits on a rack, so.
And our assessors reference those?
So, I mean, you know, part of assessing, obviously, is to see if anything's been built, or what has, you know, and it, it is a nice aerial, we do have aerials that we can pick up on our computers at the same time. These are also a good reference for, um, residents that come in, so, but it basically, the recommendation, if you look at the back, like I said, in order to have an efficient and accurate assessing department, ma, accurate maps are, you know, are important, are, basically, as they say here, are mandatory, you know, so. Accurate property and record cards and assessment maps are mandatory, if you want to have an efficient office, what they're recommending, so.
I mean, that was twenty years ago, lots changed.
Yeah, your house wasn't there, was it, Frank?
My house wasn't there either.
So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve, uh, what we don't know, again, this is something that we. It is not budgeted, so I mean, I don't know where we were, this.
What's it come to, what's the cost?
Seventeen fifty-two is what we have listed.
And, and actually, we're gonna, the, these are, we're, they're gonna come out with a new satellite imagery that's gonna be in new data on January, so we would not get them until after January, so we got the latest.
Can we use ARPA funds?
Yeah, you could.
Oh, you still have media funds too.
That might be worthwhile to, I mean.
I use ARPA funds, because we have to use those by a certain date. What are you saying?
I don't think we're gonna have a problem utilizing our, our remaining ARPA funds.
Okay, I'm okay either way.
So. Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this, um, proposal for the GIS maps, two hundred and ninety-two sheets at a cost of no more than two thousand dollars.
One, yeah, seventeen, oh, okay, seventeen fifty-two, yeah, two thousand's good.
Utilizing?
Utilizing, uh, ARPA funds.
All support. Can we get a roll call, please? Sure.
Why don't you wanna have it, like, digital, on a computer?
We, we, we're gonna get them both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm looking at this screen, thinking how nice it would be to blow it up and look at it.
Yeah.
On a screen.
Yeah, we will have both, you know, but there's a lot of people that are not very computer savvy still within our community, and, and, you know, we've used them before.
I, I didn't realize you were getting it digital, I thought it was only gonna be paper, and I just thought with today's technology, it would be nice to blow it up.
Well, we can get them, we can get them digitally now, for free, I mean, we can go on a computer now and look at them.
Yeah, we're gonna have both, you know.
But the hard copy is, like, good when residents come in and need to look, or the developers come in and you gotta point something out.
I think the new ones are gonna have more of the property description, property outlines, maybe even hopefully, um, dimensions, maybe some dimensions on them, which will be good. Okay. And moving on, the last thing, oh, no, we got, what's the dust control for?
Just to.
Oh, brine treatment is seven.
Sodium chloride?
Yeah.
Although they don't use sodium chloride anymore, do they?
Yeah, brine.
Brine.
So, the, I received a few different phone calls from residents, and, well, first I received them, uh, red, uh.
Need a motion on the last, we need a, we need a roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Roll call, please, sorry.
So, DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sorry about that. So, item seven I, the dust control. So, I, I had to have a, a, a brine treatment done to the roads, um, which we've not had to do since our administration has started. You, we get two treatments that are free of charge based, you know, from what the county pays. Anything additional to that, I don't know if you guys remember, but back in March, we brought this, or April, to the board for, um, look, and if you look at the second sheet, it says what the additional treatments would be, or if we wanted to just have spot treating, what it would be per mile. I got a call from, um, the Macomb County Road Commission, they said that they had to take care of some issues along McKay Road, Scotch Settlement, and Brown Road, um, and that they were gonna, obviously, start getting complaints, because the dust was gonna be real bad, it's been a real dry year. He was one hundred percent correct, he received phone calls from the dust being so bad, and I had also received, um, a couple really bad phone calls in regards to the dust. So I had to make the decision on the weekend to go ahead and have a, a brine treatment done to that section of road, which is four miles of road at five hundred and forty dollars per mile, and there was a surcharge of sixty dollars per mile additional, so. Um, and that came out to a cost of, what was the amount, twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty, yeah, like, twenty-eight, rounded up to twenty-eight.
Forty-seven hundred dollars, so, anybody that's driven down McKay Road, north of Evelyn Road, the cars are doing seventy miles an hour, um, when they regrade those roads, the dust gets real bad, and they said it was, it got to the point it was a very dangerous situation, because they couldn't see, if a car would have been stopped in front of them, they were driving so fast, so.
I don't think anybody's doubting that, that need, but it's just, we just have to decide where it's coming from, she told me, media funds, she told you something else?
I, she said it was gonna come out of the general fund, and it wouldn't be an issue, um, because I know we have two funds for road, uh.
Yeah, but she told me that because they're, the last two years have been so, so wet, that, that what, we didn't, it's not included, we didn't include it in our budget, so.
Yeah, but we.
I think just to be on the safe side, Mike, uh, it should come from media funds, because we've depleted the general fund, I mean, the roads.
But, I mean, I guess my, I guess we gotta approve where the money's coming from, I mean, this is, this is kind of like a.
I take it this is not in the budget today?
Exactly.
So it's gotta come from another budget line item, whether it's.
The funding, you mean, so is it, is it basically, if it's a road maintenance issue, and we have a road maintenance budget, why are we approving it?
Because we specifically didn't include this in it, because we, the previous summers have been so wet, so we didn't include this, because we're working with such a tight budget.
I mean, we didn't include it in the budget?
Yeah, right.
Well, how would we know we were gonna have a, a wet summer, or a dry summer, when we're doing the budget?
I think we just anticipated that we wouldn't, I, I, you know, it's an oversight, so next time we need to, to add it.
To add it.
But for now.
But the budget is.
When do they do this?
When do they do?
And then to September, which is late.
The, you said the county does two of them?
They do two of them at different intervals throughout the year, right, yeah.
Is it, do they do it in the winter time?
No, no.
So, our budget has gotta be approved by July first?
So in our budget next year, we're just included.
Yeah, so are we approving this now, or should we bring this up as a budget item for the next fiscal year?
We already ordered this, and we have to pay it, so now we just have to decide where to take it.
Oh, it's already approved?
It's not.
We didn't approve it, but he just did.
And then going forward for next year, make sure we're including it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me try to understand, what, what are we approving?
Yeah.
We just have to talk about where this might, we didn't approve this, Mike felt, did it on his own, because he got some complaints, so now we just have to decide where to take it from.
Historically, it's been done in the past, Richards had to do it, and it's not the first time that we've had to do some spot treating, and thank God we haven't had to do much more of it, because our roads get really bad, and.
Wait, I thought Mike just approved four or five miles. This is, this is twenty thousand dollars, this is thirty-five miles.
That's if we did the whole township, we only did four miles, we were able to spot, just spot treat.
Oh, so what we're talking about is not this?
Right.
Right.
How much are we talking about?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven hundred dollars, oh, okay, I thought we were talking about twenty thousand dollars.
But my, but my point being is that we don't have in our budget dust control for our roads, we have road maintenance and road improvements, and that would fall, this would fall under road maintenance and road improvements. We don't have an individual itemized dust control, let's say, line item in our budget. I mean.
But I think we have two applications from Macomb County, and, and whatever thought process we had, that we thought maybe that was adequate.
Yeah.
So we didn't have to pay for an extra one.
We had the opportunity in April, this was brought in front of you guys in April, to go ahead and approve for additional treatments, if you wanted to have treatments done. Washington Township did approve one extra treatment, we did not approve anything additional. Last year, we did not approve anything additional. Doesn't mean that we weren't gonna have a dry year, we don't know.
But you're not asking today to approve an additional application, you're just asking us to approve the twenty-seven hundred dollars?
There was an additional application that, that we added after.
That the supervisor felt was a emergency situation?
Emergency, he did, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So now we gotta decide where that money's coming from.
Oh, I see, so that's all we're deciding?
Right.
And then going forward for next year, we would probably should.
It's a discussion item.
In, in next year's budget, so we're not having the same conversation.
If we can afford it.
I just don't understand. We have budget for road maintenance and improvements, there is a budget there already, but we don't need to have a separate line item for.
Oh, I see.
Dust control, I mean, are we gonna do ditch digging and catch spaces and repairs?
You're saying we could use our road maintenance budget dollars to cover this if we had to?
Right, I mean, it's not something.
Why can't we just take this out of our road maintenance budget?
Because they said they don't have it.
Oh, they've, they've used it up?
We exceeded our budget on our road maintenance and our improvement.
I got it, okay, I understand.
So it's not technically, we need to approve something, we need to amend our budget, or figure out where we're gonna pay for it, is what it boils down to. But it's not like a, I'm not gonna add it to the budget next year for dust control.
So, we're, really, we're talking about the budget amendment, where does this get transferred, where does the road maintenance money get transferred from?
Right.
I got it, okay.
Where's, where's this twenty-seven hundred dollars, where we're, where we're gonna take it?
Can we take it out of the media contract?
That's what Rhonda suggested to me, but it sounds like she, he had a different conversation.
She suggested you, it's your office, so I mean, I would be, I would, whatever, go, I mean, that's, I mean.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Take it out of the media?
Okay.